Welcome to Jefferson County Commission Special Meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 10th. It's 2021, it's now 3:00 AM. We would like to start off this meeting by saying a question.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioner Cad and Hudson and myself are here. Person Commissioner Athens and Jackson are on Zoom. Purpose of this meeting is to discuss the American Rescue Plan submissions. So I'm going to turn this over to Michelle and have her take it from here.
I just wanted to remind the viewers that we do have all of the submissions as well as the application for available on the county's website. So now under public notices, hearings and notices, in the middle of the page, there's a link to the American Rescue Plan Act page, and this is what the page looks like. It shows the allowable usage of funds, the amount that were awarded to each of the incorporated areas in Jefferson County. There's a link here in the middle. It says click here to complete our plan online application. And then submissions that we've received as of right now, if you click on this link here, it actually shows the summary page. And we're going to look at this in a minute. It shows a summary of their application number, who submitted it, what they're, a brief description of what they're requesting, the amount that they requested. Since we've opened the online portal, a few of our applicants have actually adjusted their amounts or withdrawn their amounts, so we have an adjusted column. And then if we've paid any amounts out, it'll be in the fourth column there. Rank applications that we've received so far, over here on the left, it says American Rescue Plan Applications. Click on that link. It has each application that we've received so far. Listed by their application number, it shows the amount they requested. And then over to the left, right, as we start making decisions on any of these requests, we'll update that with the status. For example, Jefferson Medical Center, they originally input a request, our request number four, and then when I ask them for financial statements, they decline to submit financial statements, and they went through the requests. So that's why your request is showing here. I'm going to go back to the request summary that I handed out today and just kind of go over that. So if an organization has already submitted a request through the online portal, their application number is listed over here on the left. If I highlighted it in yellow here, I haven't heard anything from the health department. I've reached out to them a couple of times, but I will make sure that their request is input. Harper's Ferry, I did speak with Mr. Vaughn last week, and he indicated that right now they are short-staffed. They have one request submitted so far for $5,100. The other requests can either revise or withdraw as well. So those may change in the future. Right now, I just like to wonder if they told us. We did have Parks and Rec withdrawal a request for program revenue replacement. Jefferson Medical Center has withdrawn their request and declined to submit financial statements. The Sheriff's Department has withdrawn its request for new vehicles. We're not able to tie that into the actual program that we need, and it should be included in our capital funding on next fiscal year. The David Port Center has withdrawn their request. They're more inclined to submit a request for any additional funding. And we received a couple of new requests from the Jefferson County African-American Cultural Heritage Festival for $12,000 to promote cultural and economic programs related to the African-American community. And then the other new request that I believe we received was from our Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency. They're requesting $157,000 for global radio, it's not for them, but I believe we have the volunteers as well. So I have any questions about the summary information before I show you what the application looks like. As applications are submitted, the information that's entered into the system, we'll have a link right here on the application rescue plan applications page, or American Rescue Plan application page. So if you click on one of these links, this is exactly what they submitted to us. It shows a redescription of their proposal, their purpose and outcomes of their request. The amount of their funding requests is here. If they've gotten any cost estimates, they should indicate there that as well. They should also indicate whether or not they've received any additional funding from other sources, potentially grant matchy funds from the state or from the federal government, but also be sure. So this is what an application looks like. They're also required to submit financial statements and operating budgets as well. And that's required of all outside agencies. It's not required in the department, state, or the state of the county commission. As we begin to schedule each of these applications to be heard before the commission, we will then send an email letting them know when their appointment time is scheduled for. So for today, I plan to discuss the internal request first, based on the direction from the commission indicating that county, county request would be considered at the top priority. So the request that I would like to go over today would be the request to fund the four positions that were eliminated due to funding. And I also have Russ Burgess here, our Director of IT. He has two requests that he would like to go over. And then I'd also like to set the schedule for December, once we're finished with that, to get an idea of who we would like to schedule for December. So before we go into Mr. Burgess's information regarding his two submissions, so I have any questions or requests from anybody on the commission, or I know we have a couple of new faces here in the commission right now.
I don't have any quick, um, questions. Commissioner Jackson, you got any questions right now?
Um, not at the moment.
Okay. All right.
We have Russ Burgess here. He's our Director of IT. He has two requests, ARPA number seven and ARPA number 10. And I did print those out for those that are here, but for the kind of people that we have home, you can get ARPA number seven first, which would be IT Department Request Number One to email to them, Request Number Seven. And this would fall under reporting guidance that indicates supporting the public health response, capital improvements for public communications efforts and enhancements for that, for those types of things. So it's definitely something that would qualify should the commission choose to approve it. And I wanted to, I'll turn it over to Russ now to go over his project request.
Very simply put, we use Exchange as our email server. We are on a version called 2013. As you may or may not be aware, we had some issues with a hack to Exchange 2013 earlier in the year. We were able to mitigate that and solve that, but one of the things is this is, was going to be a request in the coming year to upgrade this system. Right now, they have Exchange 2022, which is supposed to be released sometime third or fourth quarter of 2021. Obviously, that's seems to be behind, but at the very least, with the roadmap that Microsoft has provided, we would like to exchange to the latest version, which when they release the next version, we would be able to upgrade to that. Some of the things with this, we run a one-premise version of Exchange. We control all our data, all our email, everything in-house. It looks like with the way that subscriptions are going in pricing, that Exchange will probably, within the next two years, make this a borderline program. We may be able to continue keeping it one premise, but instead of purchasing it once and then keeping it for as long as we can maintain it and keep support on it, that's probably going to go away and they're going to go to subscription price. We have issues with our system. It is outdated. It is reaching its end of life. I meant to bring the actual end of life for it, but we're going to lose support. And it is one of the ways that we communicate with all our citizens, how we communicate amongst ourselves, with fire, ESA, with everyone. This is, this email, as you know, today is very prevalent and one of the main ways of communications, and it is how we communicate with the public also. So I'm not sure what kind of questions I can answer for you or what I could tell you in regards to this.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Russ on ARPA seven?
Well, I just want to be clear, I understand because I'm not technically savvy as you are. I'm not technically savvy at all. If we upgrade, excuse me, to this new system, now is there, I mean, that we have any clue what that is? Do we have to keep on paying for support? What are the details of all making the change besides a better, our old system is, you know, we need to upgrade, but what are the details?
Microsoft has not released their actual guidelines on what they're going to do. But what we have done with this was we purchased this originally, this Exchange out of 2013. We made the original purchase, and we have not paid anything since then. That is my goal, to try to lock in our pricing and stay where we are as long as we can with what we have. That being said, obviously, Microsoft can make changes and do things, but it looks like if we were to do this within the next year, we will probably lock this in and be in much better shape than we would if we did not.
Okay. Well, you've answered my question. Thank you. Yeah. Because I know they tend to tack on fees, you know, once you make a chunk of change into a program.
There's a, yeah. This Commissioner Athens Jackson, have anything? Any questions for Russell? Okay.
Okay. And then while we have it here, we'll look at ARPA number 10. His ARPA number 10 request is the Commission Meeting Room, Public Meeting Technology Improvements. As you know, during the pandemic, communications with the public were restrained significantly, and we had to resort to online and virtual meetings, and Russ spearheaded all of that. So I'll look at what suggestions he has for ensuring that communication is public. Well, we'll ensue should we have another pandemic.
Okay. I guess we off with this to say that the Commission Meeting Room and what we have in here, most of it is based on a press-tron system that you can see in the very back. And I believe some of you are familiar with the microphones that we used before. We had the microphones on the desk, and they were voice activated. We had some issues with that. Sometimes they didn't pick up quick enough. Sometimes if you were, if you were leaning back, it might not have caught your voice. I'm not sure what has happened, power surges or anything like that. This was here when I got here approximately seven, eight years ago. I'm not sure how long it's been here. We have lost part of the system. Part of it is non-functioning. We cannot get into part of it. We have no support for it. The gentleman who originally put it in is here in Charlestown, and it has been very helpful. We are fortunate that it is working at the moment. I have no way to fix it, correct it, if any other parts of it fail. So that was one of the issues I've had. We were very fortunate. I found that when we looked through this, that there are microphones in the ceiling, and it has been working. But as you know, if you, Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Athens, you may be able to see this, sometimes it's hard to hear when you're on the virtual meeting. And I think that that's one of the things for all our citizens, that we need to have clear and concise video or audio, at the very least, and video to help, so we can demonstrate on the screen. I'm not an audio/video person. I have reached out to five different companies. With the pandemic, they have been overwhelmed, I think maybe the answer. Our local gentleman, which I like him, he's been wonderful. He has not had any time to do this. Three of the others that I reached out to did not even submit any kind of documentation or anything. They just didn't have an interest. I had interest from one company down in Florida, then great people, and they have spent some time with me. It's expensive. And in discussing doing this or upgrading this room, one of the things that came through was that the system would not be portable, but that we could repurpose it probably once or twice if we needed to, if for some reason we lost the lease on here or the ladders or something like that. But it would be a bit of a significant move. But as it is now, as I say, I'm not really an audiovisual person, and the ones I've reached out to, it's been not much of a response. Everybody swamped them. And as I say, like this, we've been over with that, but this system could go too. So I consider this a great need to keep us informed with the public.
And the estimated cost that he has is about $50,000. Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for Russ on ARPA, ARPA 10?
Well, I think it can be affordable. I mean, if we need to, but that was my concern too. We don't own this room, so.
Not sharing that concern? Go ahead, Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, Russ, this is for video and audio in that room?
Yes. In fact, if you would like, I did bring, I didn't put all these out, but if you would like, I can share a proposal that we did get from the one company that did respond to us that I have been working with. So if you'd like, I can email you that.
Yeah, it would be nice, nice to see that and exactly what we're talking about as far as upgrading and doing what needs to be done for more efficient use and streaming and stuff.
Yeah, because I, I would like to see just how it's different, like in terms of video, what would that look like, and just how this system would differ from what we have right now.
I don't disagree. I think that would be a good idea. One of the things that we had issues with when we were talking about cameras and doing some of this was, I'm probably not going to explain this very well, but the different camera systems, they wanted most of them to be wired, and they wanted something to run across the floor. And I really did not like having something run across the floor, but obviously, we're not going to trench the floor here in the library and run stuff underneath. So as strange as it sounds, the different people I've talked to say this room is a challenge. I have no idea why this room is a challenge, but they say it is. But I will forward on to you this proposal that they gave us, and they've been very helpful. So any questions you have, you can speak with me, or we can set up a meeting with them if we'd like to do that.
Okay. Thank you. And does anybody else have any further questions for Russ?
So I guess procedurally, did we want to make any decisions on either of these today, or did we want to table them until December?
What's the, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I think we table pending more detail.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, at least for the Commission Meeting Room, let me get this documentation to everyone, at least for that one, because that, I think you should look at this, and we could discuss this more at the very least.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Russ.
We'll table both of those until December, and we'll have a decision made in December. We'll receive additional information.
Do you want a motion to table this too, or just no actions, no actions, no, yeah, okay. All right. Just make sure.
Thank you.
Make some matter prioritization to.
Sure.
All right. So the next items that I wanted to go over today were the requests for restoration of four positions that were eliminated due to revenue loss. The first one is ARPA 19. In fiscal year 21, the Sheriff's Department lost funding from the Governor's Highway Safety Program for two sheriff's deputy positions, and they were eliminated due to attrition as a result of this funding loss. One of those positions was, was filled until just a few weeks ago. In fact, they just lost the second position just recently. So the request is from the department to fill those positions with funding from ARPA through 1231, 2024. And then after 1231, 2024, funding revenue, revenue, the funding that we received from ARPA for revenue loss should, should close the gap for us. So we should get to a point where our revenue has stabilized or gone back to our normal 4% increase per year. So at the end of 1231, 2024, funding would then revert back to General County, and those positions would, would continue to be permanent. The cost of filling those two positions for the next three years would be $504,000. I do recommend that we approve this request because there is a need in the department. Those positions were filled for at least, I think, two or three years, maybe, maybe a little longer. It's been quite a while. So it's been a significant loss to that department to lose those two positions that were previously funded by the Governor's Highway Safety Program. Now, there would not be any additional need for vehicles as, you know, as I said, those positions were filled until just recently, so they already have vehicles for those positions. So there wouldn't be any additional need for, for any additional equipment. The cost would relate primarily to just approving to fill those positions and funding them with ARPA funding at a cost of $504,000 through 1231, 2024.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Michelle on ARPA 19?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. And that, that the 504, I'm looking at right here, 504, 400, it is enough to continue the funding.
Until, until our general revenue has restored back to its, until the gap funding explodes.
Okay. I do agree, this is something that needs to be taken care of due to the loss of two deputies back during the pandemic. I would like to go, we had to move a motion to approve ARPA 19, which is the hiring of two deputies in an amount of $504,400. Oh, second. Second. Any discussion? Here or none, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion carries, any names? That's all hands. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for raising your hand. I can see you off on the screen there. All right, we're going to move on to ARPA number 20.
ARPA number 20 is a position that was created in fiscal year 20, but never filled. It's the CAD Administrator Position. It was eliminated in fiscal, it was approved to be a brand-new position in fiscal year 20 to fill a need in our 901 Center and our Public Safety Department to create a CAD Administrator Position. The CAD Administrator will be responsible for programming all of our public safety needs related to law enforcement, emergency services, and our volunteer fire departments. In fiscal year 20, when the pandemic happened and revenue shortages began to happen, this put any vacant positions were frozen. This is one of the positions that was actually frozen as a result of that revenue loss. I believe the department still has the need to fill this position, and that's been shown in recent meetings that we've had regarding the need for programming in our 901 Center, especially as it relates to fire. I would recommend that we approve this position as a full-time position and fund it with ARPA revenue. Cost to fund this position through 1231, 2024, $246,000. And much like our two Sheriff's Department positions that we just approved, funding at the end of that would then come from our general revenues as the gap is closed and we have our normal revenue trend for general revenues restored at a normal 4% increase per year. Do I have, I have a statement, must add anything to that position, or?
We talked about, I mean, in services contract, but as we're getting into programming, the Response Plan module, it will be intensive even to maintain. I spoke with Chris Cross, who was helping us program that, and he felt like it would require a full-time position for CAD Administrator because of how intensive that program is to maintain, to make any changes to it. So that's up to the commission, but once we started programming Response Plan, I received information that's different. I think we had talked about a managed services contract. We'd reached out to two companies for managed services, and both of them have declined to maintain the Response Plan as it's being requested to be programmed.
Does anybody have any questions for Michelle or Stephanie? Good.
To make, yeah. So I know we just made the motion to move Chris Cross over to IT to work on the Response Plan and to try to build out the CAD with that. I would be inclined to table this until we find out actually what kind of traction Chris Cross is getting in trying to get that Response Plan out, and then when we can reassess and determine the need of this CAD Administrator.
Okay.
I just have a question for Michelle. I'm assuming the guidelines with these ARPA funds will allow us to use this money through 2024. And yes, eligible uses of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. The guideline that is posted online that we received from the Treasury says that addressing the negative impacts, economic impacts caused by the public health emergency would enable governments to rehire public sector staff and rebuild capacity as a result of any positions that were cut due to funding loss.
Now, and I will say, I do think this position is necessary, but I'm willing to wait to get an update from Chris Cross, but just maintaining the system with the updated information, that's, you know, maintenance is going to be a huge issue, while not only just getting it done. So I'd like to come back to this and consider it with some more information.
So table it until December?
Yes, I feel the same way. So yes. If you could follow up with Chris, and then we'll, we'll talk about this, that ARPA 20 in December.
And then the last one that I wanted to go over in detail today was ARPA number 21. Similar to the three positions that we just talked about in fiscal year 20, there was a position approved in the County Commission's Office for an administrative position to help alleviate some of the workload of our executive staff in the County Commission's Office and primarily handle some of our HR functions related to FMLA and disciplinary action and things like that. This new position was slated to be filled effective July the 1st of 2020. However, when the pandemic happened, general county revenue loss, financial policy that we implemented, we froze this position, and then it was actually eliminated during the fiscal year 22 budget process that we held last, last February. So this position would qualify to be funded with ARPA funding to rehire public sector staff and rebuild capacity as a result of positions that were cut due to the public health emergency. The cost of this position would be about $165,000, and that cost would be funded through ARPA funds through 1231, 2024, at which time it would be funded by general revenues as the gap is closed on our revenue loss that we have. And I'd love to see if we need to add anything to that position.
I think we have 200 employees. We have no defined HR functions, other than myself and Michelle, or the county administrator and finance director kind of piecing that together. It would help with, envision this, this position doing, you know, just kind of, for lack of a better term, some of the grunt work. So if someone applies to FMLA, I provide those forms to them. I sit down with them and tell them what their rights and responsibilities are. I put them into the system. I'm fielding all of that, or the county administrator position is fielding all of that work. I do that for both county commission departments and elected departments. The recommended threshold for an HR, this is not an HR Director position, this is, I believe, the generalist.
Just a generalist.
That reports to the county administrator. But the threshold for an HR Director for a number of employees is about 50. That's the standard. We have had an HR Director position requested from at least two county administrators ago. So Tim Boyd was the first county administrator to request an HR Director. We kind of made it a lower-level position to make it more budget-friendly. They would do all of the investigations. So this would be a frontline person that, that the employees could go to first before they get to the county administrator. And, you know, could kind of field all of that work and allow the county administrator to focus on more high-level issues and carrying out the commission's policies.
And this position would focus, would relieve some of the burden on the county administrator role. They would probably insert themselves into the hiring and firing and the disciplinary type of duties that the county administrator was currently doing. Those to me are something that an HR generalist or an administrative role should handle versus your executive role.
Okay. Does anybody have questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, I feel the same way with this position. I'm not saying it's not needed. I think we really should table this until we found a new county administrator and have him be involved in the process of assessing the needs in the office. And ultimately, this person would report to them, is letting them have a choice in picking, or say, at least in interviewing candidates for this type of position.
Well, I'm okay with tabling it for a bit, but I do think we need more staff in the county commission office. You know, one person is out for any reason, and, you know, you only have a couple people there. Yes, there are people upstairs, but that doesn't help you when you have somebody come in that's not happy with their business or the answers that they're getting, you know, lunch breaks and all that stuff, and everybody has rights to their time off and taking some vacation days. And it's kind of hard to juggle all that and keep the office adequately staffed. So I do believe there is a need for an additional staff person in the county commission office, and whether that's an HR generalist or just a, somebody in an administrative position, it's needed. So I will go along with tabling it, but I do think we need to fill it.
No, I tend to agree with that we do need it. I think this will be a, a interview. I think the county administrator should be one interviewing for this position, and we'll probably get that taken care of first, and then this could be the first task, like a good first task, I guess.
Well, and maybe too, we could agree to this, but say it's until the new minister.
Just not fill it until.
Until the county administrator is in place.
Funding today and then just not advertise and fill it.
And into the county, I'm fine with doing that, too.
Yeah.
Just, so I would like the new administrator to come in and actually update the job descriptions that haven't been updated for some time and determine the best use of resources and then determine what this person's going to do. So I think, I'm not opposed to the position, I'm just think the new administrator should come in and get a feel and determine the needs in the office and whose responsibilities are what, particularly with those job descriptions being outdated, like haven't been updated since twenty twelve, is decide clearly who's doing what and is responsible for what and finding things for this person, person to do. And I think all of that should be, I don't think we approve it yet until the new administrator gets in and gets a handle around things and determines the need and exactly what this person's going to be doing. Going from a generalist to someone that sits at the front desk as an admin is a deep, huge deviation in salary.
Sure. I understand. Yeah, either way, I, you know, I agree, I agree with Wade. And I think it's very important, and they do definitely need more people in that office right now. So, but I do hear the concerns of maybe Wade getting some more input from a new admin, administrative, and administrator as well, too. So I'm okay either way, I'm okay to just table until then, but it's something I definitely want to bring back before this body to approve, so we get more help and more bodies in that office. Does anybody have any other questions?
No, I have a question. If we update the job description, is it still the same position and would it still be? Because the way it is, would it be, because is that a new position or is it, because it was a cut position? Or does it, it has to be the position we cut, isn't it?
I would think it needs to be the position that we cut.
Yeah. I think a new job description would make that a new job.
Yeah, so I have to look at those details and see how we can do it correctly.
I can, I can get clarification on that, but you do mix up. Very valid.
So we had ten other descriptions on the job, responsibilities, it might not fall, it might not qualify for our funds, too. So, yeah. Okay. Makes sense.
Michelle, you're doing a marvelous job, and I'm new to understanding all this, but can we get a spreadsheet as we go through these presentations over the months and know what we've approved, tabled, put on the bubble, and what our total pot of money is that we have?
Yes. So right now, the way the spreadsheet looks, I have a status column here, and it shows the adjusted amount, the amount paid, and then subtotal to the, to the right.
Yeah.
What I can do is I can create a second, a different one that sorts it a little differently, you know, that looks a little easier to see what's been approved and what's not been approved. But on the third page there, it showed me that the total ARPA funding that we received is five point five million. We added interest of about nine thousand dollars. We have expenditures to date at two point three million. The balance in our ARPA fund right now is three point two million. We are anticipated to receive an additional five point five million in December.
Okay.
So our anticipated balance is eight point eight million, but yes. I will, I will do a second version of this so that it's sorted a little differently.
Yeah, yeah. Because, I mean, it's a huge pot of money, but I want to make sure we spend it wisely.
And I don't want anybody to get mixed up, and did we miss them? Some of these are just one line, and it's easy to skip them.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I have anything else?
I don't have anything. The only thing I wanted to do was to schedule who we wanted to come in in December, which we're going to continue with our county priorities. So I wanted to schedule ARPA number six, which is Jeff Holzinski, our nine one one center for our next generation nine one one E-Z Net for December. Roger Goodwin, county engineering, he has two requests, ARPA twenty-five and twenty-seven. I'm going to schedule him in December. Russ, we're going to carry him forward to December, and we'll carry forward our two positions from December. And then our sheriff's department has a request to renovate the animal control building. I want to carry that one forward until December. I'm sorry, I'm going to schedule that one for December. And then ARPA twenty-nine and for emergency services agency, the portable radios, I would like to schedule that one in December. And then if, I don't, I don't want to pile too much on in one day, but it seems to go pretty quickly today. So I just wanted to see what your thoughts were on adding Charlestown's request for homeless support in December as well.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, you know, go ahead, Commissioner.
No, I've had conversation on the side with Delegate Clark. I've also had conversation with Attorney General Morrissey that have alluded to some of these projects, and not necessarily ones Michelle just mentioned, but some of these requests coming in from the town, the municipalities, that the state might have opportunities for matching funds, particularly for water and sewer and those sort of things. I would like to be able to sit down with some of them with our list and say, tell us what you're referring to or what you're talking about, how we can make this money go the furthest for us and meet the needs of the people. I would, I would like to have that opportunity. I know they're all going to be in for a send-off, I guess their December send-off, where we might be able to have a couple of those folks in one room to kind of talk about what we have and how the state can complement the funds that we have and what projects that applies to. So I would like to defer our next meeting to January, just to give us time to do some of that.
Yeah, I was going to, you know, say something very similar. I spoke to Delegate Harding, who is actually on the state committee for ARPA funds. The state of West Virginia has eight hundred million dollars in their ARPA fund account, and there's a committee that's split together to try to, as we are going through our requests, and they're going to do the same. And what they want to do, or they want to try to create a, a sharing, match, matching funds, excuse me, with the counties. And that committee is actually meeting the first part of next week. I'm hoping and hopeful that we'll have some more, you know, some information back from him, them next week on what their plans are. You know, if you take, if you just divide eight hundred million dollars with the counties of West Virginia, that's another fourteen million per county. Now, okay, before you might print that in the paper, that's not how it's going to get divided. Yeah, yeah. So if you take, yeah, if you take it, if you go by population in Jefferson County, we might probably double that. But again, again, I'll say again, that is not how it's going to get divided, before you might print that in the paper. But it will be very, I really don't want to get into too much discussion over our capital improvement funds for several of these projects until we know, and, you know, I'll just pick out like the Parson Rec sewer tie, it's a million dollars. Well, if, if, if we have matching funds from the, from the state, that only costs us a half million, so our ARPA funds will go twice as far. So I think there is a probably good, good reason to pause some of this stuff until, until we get more clarification from the state. Maybe we could just, until they get a chance to meet and get some more information to us, maybe we delay scheduling our meeting until we get some more information from them. And it's maybe, we might have some information from them next week, and maybe at next week's kind of commission meeting we can schedule it. But I think we wait on them to hear back, see kind of what their guidance is and what, what plans they have moving forward.
Okay. So for the projects that I had mentioned, you just want to move all of those to January? Or some of them really aren't, most of what I brought up are not infrastructure.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I would say go ahead. I mean, we might as well listen, you know, know all the details of each one, and, you know, we may not make a decision, but at least we've gone through it, and we can start prioritizing, whether we make, say yes or no, or just say this, this should be top priority or in the top five.
Okay.
I guess I'm just suggesting that if we know that we can get matching fronts from the state, that might help us make decisions on some of these things a little easier.
So I have a thing that's, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, and we can do maybe all the sewer stuff in one day, and hear all those presentations, and hopefully in January we'll know.
Right.
So the state's funding is going to be shared.
Right. And the second Wednesday in January is January the twelfth. So if we're skipping the December meeting, the next meeting will be January the twelfth. And then everything I mentioned for December will move to January. That makes sense? And then we'll have an update on state's potential matching needs for infrastructure projects.
Sounds like a good plan.
So January the twelfth at nine thirty, eight, will be the next meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I'll also move that motion. Do I have a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All in. Motion carries, Nancy. Thank you. Do we have anything else?
I guess if you wanted to see if anyone in the room had any comment.
Yes. Does anybody want to make any comments on the ARPA funding stuff? I mean, obviously, whoever made requests will have an opportunity later if you made a request on here, but if you have something now, you can certainly bring it up. Go ahead, come on up, sir. You'll have, you have three minutes to make the comments you'd like.
David Tab, Jefferson County resident, had a meeting with Jill Elson over at Shepherd College last Thursday. I've actually sent her a letter of needs for the county, mainly in the volunteer fire companies' issues. I also have the funds that, or the forms that are going to the state intake, and that's what Jill Elson is doing right now. And I see in my request, I requested her assistance to, her statement, of course, I go after written, not verbal, that the fire companies should apply for their funding of employees due to the pandemic, come back to the county commission. This is money that they have already spent. This is money that they're continuing to spend, and it is available through HARP. So I've contacted at least four of them. One of them's right here, I think he'd like to ask some questions, too, on this issue. So, and this, I've already seen it from everyone. This whole thing is on the fence. We do not have enough information. Craig Blair, talked to him here last Friday, president of the senate, and he's in the same butt. He says, let's look at this HARP money, which I'm agreeing with you, Commissioner, that matching funds, then you have skin in the game. This will get done. It will make these things happen, but it's not all going to be free. But let's make sure that everybody's participating, everything's going the right way. So finally, I applaud something going on here that at least all of us are in agreement, even to the state senate, that, you know, these things, we need to use it wisely, we need to bring it together, we need more information. And the only reason I even knew about this meeting with Jill Elson was from another part of the state. There's, there's nothing posted. So I've even filed for HARP money through the, through the government. Whether it flies or not, I don't know, but this is new ground. I would applaud all of us working together on this. It's a whole new deal, so let's make it work. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anything else? Brad?
I have more of a question. Everything is so unanswered, but mine is more of a question. So on the, when you were originally going through the application process online, being that all of our financial statements and budgets and all of that gets submitted every year, is that something that we still have to submit as a volunteer fire department?
You would still need, well, you would still need to just upload them. I do have them, I can upload them on your behalf as well. But it shouldn't be a big deal for you to just upload your nine ninety.
Because at least a couple of them I can try to get in quick.
Okay.
That's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, any, anybody that I have.
Everything is so new and so much unanswered stuff going on, like I actually filled out paper that they would have to bring today, didn't know it was online, so.
Yeah, definitely hit your application in online.
Okay.
Sounds good.
One more question. What's the deadline on this? Is this, is there a cutoff date for actually submitting?
The deadline was actually October thirty-first. However, the commission doesn't have an issue with it. I certainly would not reject their application for me. It's late, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem extending the application date at all. If we need to move a motion to do that, I would even mind it if it's back in this month, too, if, if we need to. So if we need to do that, we get something late, we can certainly look at it, and I don't know how y'all feel.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I mean, this is, yeah, I mean, here's, here's the whole thing. We have three years to take to spend this money. We don't have to do it tomorrow. So, so we have time, so, so we have to extend the application date, we'll do that. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to be lenient, too, because we also changed how to apply midway through the process.
We did, and then we had about two weeks to, to get everything done online, so.
Yeah. Well, I'll go ahead and move a motion to move the application date back to, let's just move to December first, if that's okay. Do it.
Second.
We have a second. Does anybody have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 There we go. Motion carries, Nancy. There you go, sir. All right.
And then just give me a call if you have any questions.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a learning curve for everyone.
Yes, yes. Well, this is, this is something new. Obviously, we, we, I don't know how, I'm sure everybody feels the same way. This is a one-time, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, you got to do it right. And we will never probably be in this position again where we have to figure out how to do this, which is good and bad.
Okay, so next meeting is January the twelfth at nine thirty, and the deadline is when we send it to twelve.
All right. Anything else? If there are no objections, we are adjourned. Thank you.